Welcome to Item G, Presentation Yale Initiative Teachers. Great to have them.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Miles Green. I'm the English and History teacher at Emory Secondary School. And we're going to talk a little bit about our experience at Yale this summer. And Sarah, did you have any?
No.
Okay. I'll just run with it here.
I'm going to go later.
Give me one second here.
Yeah, I think Sarah's an old hand at this. I think she's giving it over to you today.
I'm going to be that guy with the USB device here and plug this in somewhere. No, okay. No big deal. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about my experience over the summer and then go into my curriculum that I developed. I think it's important to note that I'm a second-year fellow. Leaving Yale the first year, I think my feelings could be summed up with this face right here. More importantly though, leaving my second year, I felt a whole lot better. And this year leaving, I would say that I felt a lot stronger about the program. The seminar that I took is called Understanding History Through Art with Tim Behringer, who is an incredible British professor, who had one of the strongest British accents I have ever experienced. And this is a picture of him here. I'm sorry. That's, this is really it. That's it for the joke, so I apologize. So, one thing that was great about taking an art history seminar is that we'd show up to class and he would say, "You know what? Pack your bags. We're going on a field trip." And we got to experience the Yale University Art Gallery, as well as the Yale Center for British Art. We saw amazing sculptures and artwork. It was great having Tim there because he was like our own personal tour guide. Secondly, I was able to cultivate and build relationships with some of the strongest teachers from across the country and engage in wonderful discussions and conversations ranging from economics, politics, education, to Twitter and Justin Bieber. Overall, the experience raised my own professional expectations. I had always thought of myself as a strong teacher, but now I'm able to quantify what it means to go from a good teacher to an amazing teacher, a great teacher. And secondly, I feel that my experience at Yale helped me become a more effective educator in that my curriculum is more diverse and it's more enriching for my students. Arguably, most importantly, I was able to expand my palette through impeccable hospitality. I was introduced to the Cuban sandwich. And it's still to this day, one of the best dishes I've ever had. Tough crap. So, my curriculum unit is titled, "Power in the Machine: A Visual Examination Into Class and Gender During the Industrial Revolution." My essential question is how did the Industrial Revolution impact the lives of working-class citizens? And ultimately, what I want to do is teach the Industrial Revolution by coupling artwork with primary documents. Students will learn about some of the problems that were brought about from the Industrial Revolution, like low wages, poor working conditions, lack of worker rights, and concerns around safety and sanitation. And also, the consequences that were brought forth from those problems, like economic and social oppression, disfigurement and exhaustion, organization, labor reform, and disease, and premature death. In terms of resources, I'm using a modern history source book, which is a collection of primary documents that was compiled by Fordham University. I'm using a reading strategy titled Four Reads by an author named Baynard Faithfull from teachinghistory.org. And the more well-known model, the Socratic questioning model, is outlined by the Foundation for Critical Thinking. While developing this PowerPoint, I really wanted to try and articulate why Yale, the Yale National Initiative, is so important for me and everybody who participates in it. And through rigorous brainstorming, I've determined that these six points kind of sum it up. There's a rich degree of collegiality. There's a huge sense of community. It strengthens your skills as a teacher. It encourages teachers to be accountable and more responsible. And it's professionally enriching. And that concludes my segment of the presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do I get to use that little clicker? Okay. Make yours go away. So, I'm Sarah Stillman, and I teach visual arts at the high school. And this is my third year participating in the Yale National Initiative. And Miles has been a great colleague to work with, and I'm very excited that he will be kind of filling in for me while I'm out a little bit. I want to share with you a little bit about what I did this year, which was I did a seminar called Immigration and Migration and the Making of the American Modern City. The unit that I wrote takes our art students through an art research-based approach through four historic immigration laws dating all the way back to the Chinese Exclusion Act, and asking students how they impacted the nation and how they impacted the Bay Area, and how immigration reform then echoes immigration issues and reform now. This is a unit where I came in knowing nothing, and now I know a lot about laws and immigration. I don't want to share as much of that with you right now as I do the unit I taught last year. I think you remember, I came back very excited, a little nerdy, about Emeryville history. And my nerdiness only blossomed once I started talking to my students, because we all got our history bug on. And I would love to just take you through what our students learned in the springtime. Oh, wait, what did I do? What do you push? So, for starters, this is the first time I was working with the Common Core standards, and I was really focusing on the college and career readiness standards. And those are listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So, it's not just making art, but talking about it, eliciting lots of questions that ask more questions, and learning a lot about writing and reading within the same parameters. This is also an art-based research approach, and this is the first time I've done art-based research. I've been working with Julia Marshall, who is a professor at SF State. We're working on a book together involving how you do art-based research. So, this was a learning process for all of us. The first thing we did in our class is we looked at this strange shape. Do you know what it is? You do.
Emeryville.
But our students were baffled. They had never seen this shape before. One student thought it looked a little like New Jersey, which I thought was pretty good. And then I brought in a map where we got to see Oakland and Berkeley and see how this is really Emeryville. So, we took this map of Emeryville, and students were asked to map their memories and their connections to the city. I have students who wrote about the first time they came across the bridge from San Francisco. I had students who made artwork about the different places that they loved to hang out. Students wrote about places they loved to eat, hang out with their friends. One student wrote about their first kiss. But what we discovered were there were some common themes among all 40 of us. And that was Annie Yates, that was a common place. The Old Emory Secondary School was a commonplace. And the final place that was the most popular was Bay Street. So, we decided to take a field trip. We went to Bay Street to study what goes on at Bay Street, and we did a sensory walk, where students were asked to be silent and take in the sounds that they heard, the smells. They were asked to consider what the air felt like as they walked in and out of different stores. And then they created what's called a mind map. And it's sort of a note-taking with words and images. And through this note-taking, a lot of students were very curious about the Shell Mound Memorial Sculpture, which led us to watching the documentary Shell Mound by Andres Cériel, in which we learned a little bit about the contamination and the construction of Bay Street, and the history of the Alone people, Shell Mound Park, Sherwin-Williams Paint Factory. And we had more questions, of course. We began to read The Alone Way, which is a nonfiction book. I was able to get a copy for each student from Donors Choose. And students used the art-based research approach to take notes. You'll notice in the left-hand corner, there is, we read about how the Alone would wear the skin of deer, and they would camouflage themselves in that way. Students learned that animal life was very different during this time, and what Oakland and Emeryville and Berkeley looked like at this time. The biggest aha at the beginning of the book was to learn that the Alone people had same-sex couples living amongst them openly. So, you'll see a piece in the right-hand corner. These are from student sketchbooks. We examined lots of photographs. On the top, you see Butcher Town, which is right along the water. And then, the picture down below was a big aha moment, because it is just a few blocks from the school and right in front of many people's homes. And it was a real big shock to find out that a train would drive down Adeline Street. Students were examining photos using protocols, the visual thinking strategies. And then, we started to transform images. This is 59th Street, two different images of 59th Street that have been transformed. The upper-left one is with makeup, because a student forgot her supplies. And it was the glowing piece. We have a piece in Photoshop on the bottom there, and another piece that was collage and drawing. But what was really interesting is that students were able to see that some of these structures are still there, and they recognized them. So, we started to think about ways that we could transform images to convey meaning, history, and also what we know about art. So, students worked on several different transferring images. You might recognize the two Emeryville leaders in the center there. Blank faces. That's Joseph Emory on the left, founder of Emeryville. Anyone recognize the guy on the right? It is. Yes, yes, he was very excited to see it when he came to our exhibition. Students were asked to select an advertisement from an Emeryville business in the past and research what became of that business. And a lot of curiosity developed about who the people were who went to that business and what happened to them, and trying to get a sense of what life was like during, in Emeryville during different time periods. So, students actually had to go read a map and go to the site of the location. Some buildings existed, some businesses existed, and some were totally different. And then, they created a piece that contrasted the past with the present. That taught me that my students need to learn a lot more about maps than Google Maps. So, I was able to get each of them a AAA roadmap, which you can see on the right, was just fascinating. It was amazing for them to see a whole section of the map, which I realize, it was the first time I realized that they don't have that experience when they look on a screen. We built a timeline. Students began with national and personal events on the left. National events were orange, personal events were pink, that happened during their lifetime or that they had a memory of. And the one on the left is the Sandy Hook shooting. And the right, we have images, moments in Emeryville history. So, students were trying to get a context of history and how long of a scope it was, because we were going all the way back to the Alone people, which is a long way back. We had a lot of exchanging of ideas. On the left, you'll see a wagon wheel activity where students rotated around, sharing their work and explaining their ideas. On the right, we have a gallery walk, and then a ladder of feedback written reflection. We connected with experts. We had Dr. Richard Ambro, who is an anthropologist, historian, archaeologist, wonder man, and became the honorary grandfather of First and Second Period last year. They adored listening to his stories, and he brought in lots of photographs and maps. We met with Maurice Kaufman, the city engineer, who talked to us a lot about the development of the Emeryville water and the shore, and told us where we could find hidden tunnels and all sorts of other secret passageways. And he had lots of great photos for us to look at. And on the right is artist Sarah Lankutis, who is an artist who works with images of Emeryville, creating art in Emeryville and Oakland. At this point, it was time for my students to go off on their own and develop their own inquiry questions. So, we started to brainstorm all the possible things that we still wanted to know about Emeryville. And each student developed their own inquiry question. One student's was about the birth practices of the Alone people and what they were like. One student was really interested in her block and trying to find out what the history of her block was like over the years. She actually found out that it was the site of the Peralta Mansion, which was a big surprise. I had students who were interested in the police department. I had students who were interested in food. Anything they were curious about, they went and pursued. This led us to the Internet, and this led us back to our sketchbooks. And then, it led us to the Oakland History Room. So, we went to the Oakland History Room, which only allows small groups of people. And we learned about this ancient thing called the Card Catalog. And this is a library that still operates on the Card Catalog. And if you ever have a moment to go to this, this room has everything you would ever want to know about the East Bay. It is astonishing. Students found articles about what they were researching. They were shocked to see maps and photographs and flyers, and they were all there for us to photograph and put our little paws on. So, that was very exciting. So exciting that we had evening hours at the library. Several students wanted to come back, and we discovered the Map Room. And this is a Sanborn Insurance map. This is a student who was researching the history of the high school site. And it turns out, we were there right after some other people were researching what was on that site. And we learned quite a bit about what was underneath the soil, possibly, around that time. And it was just a really interesting moment for students to realize that there was a mobile home park along there, that there was an auto repair shop there. So, students understanding that just because they remember it doesn't mean it's the only history that's there. Taro Hattori is a guest artist who's worked with us. You might remember him from The Trickster Project, that got us involved with the police a little bit. He is a fantastic artist, and this was the second year he worked with us. He met us at the library. He worked with students on their projects. He showed them how to electrify things. And it was really wonderful, because he's a professional artist working in Oakland and Emeryville. And he has so much insight to share with us. Now, we have our culminating project. So, what do we do with all this? This is Vanessa, who was really interested in the Sanborn Insurance maps. And she was researching a strip of San Pablo Avenue from the past to the present and all the different buildings that had been there. So, she made a reproduction on an old door of a Sanborn Insurance map with all the places that she thought people should know about that didn't exist anymore. This is Jose Solis, the artist who has work in the hallway. He lives on Adeline Street. And as soon as he saw that picture of the Santa Fe Railroad, he was just hooked. This is his piece, and it lights up, although our event was during the day, you can't see it. And it involves found objects of people waiting for the train, the train, and bottle caps. This is Fatima, and her whole research was on the history of the Emory School District. And she read articles about what was going on in the district in the '60s and '70s. She researched different graduates and what happened to them. She created a piece that involved slicing the articles that she read and putting them back together again, but in a very linear and layered fashion. We were very fortunate to have a vacant space at Bay Street for a pop-up gallery. It was, we popped up and popped down in about two hours. It was a week to set up. Students came during the week and set up the gallery. It was a great time for us to invite community members, and we had a lot of people that we knew, but a lot of people who just happened to be at the mall that day. And it was a wonderful time for students to share and teach others about the activities that they did, but also what they had learned. And we even learned a little bit more. We had, recreated our timeline and had people adding events to it. So, we learned a lot more about Emeryville history. And students really, really enjoyed engaging with our community through this project. And it was really a great, it was the biggest event I've ever taught, biggest event I've ever thrown, and it was really, really thrilling. I have to say, at the beginning of this school year, I have students write to me what they want to learn. And I had three students say, "I can't wait to learn about Emeryville history." So, I thought, my nerdiness is spreading. I know I've been talking a while, but I'm putting on my other hat. You've seen what our students gained from this experience. And I have to tell you, I'm the city rep for the Bay Area, and I represent the group of teachers from Brisbane, Bay Shore, Jefferson Union, and Oceana School Districts in San Mateo. Those are our partners. I coordinate our recruitment, our selection, and I lead the whole group each year. And I'm very lucky that Miles is going to step into that role in the next few months. I want to tell you a little bit about the Yale National Initiative. In the 1980s, it was a way to bridge the divide in New Haven. The New Haven public schools were struggling, and Yale knew that they had a responsibility. So, they thought they would work to deepen content in the public school teachers. The program grew with the mission to serve under-resourced public school teachers across the country. Nationally, there are 11 cities and city school districts participating, both urban and rural districts. And five of these districts have adopted the Institute approach and have their own local partnerships with universities to create this model and offer it to their teachers year-round. Since 2010, 12 Emory Unified teachers have attended the intensive session in New Haven, and we've been given the opportunity to study with Yale faculty, deepening our own knowledge content and developing a research-based curriculum that is published on the Yale National Initiative website, and is an open-source curriculum, which means it's available to anyone in the world to read what we wrote and to use it. In addition to the Yale libraries, YNI provides our airfare to and from New Haven three times a year, and room and board accommodations. As teachers, we also receive an honorarium for our work. And I'm sure you're wondering why we get this great opportunity. This is my sales pitch. The district was originally approached by the Yale National Initiative during John Sugiyama's first assignment with the district. And on behalf of the district, he committed that we would be sending teachers every year, and we would be exploring the possibility of adopting this as a professional development opportunity. We've had a lot of changes in leadership, and lots of teachers go through the program. So, we definitely need to build some consistency. We are looking to build this program in the Bay Area. We have reached out to colleagues at the Alameda County Office of Education. They saw the unit I did last year, and they're very eager to partner with us. I filled in Dr. Rubio on our program, and he'll come to New Haven with us in October to learn more and meet superintendents from other districts and Yale faculty. And we just wanted to tell you about this program, because I have a feeling we won't be able to go to New Haven for free every year unless we start moving in a direction that we talked about moving four years ago. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the program or anything at all. Miles would too.
Well, I'll just, just real quickly, fabulous presentations. I look forward to a recap of your project. I think that's amazing curriculum that you created, you designed. Fabulous work last year, and I'm just as excited. Even if you're out for a few months, it's fine, as long as you come back, you know? But incredible work, and I'm sure students that participated in that project had more than, you know, have inspired more than just a few students. There's probably, I'm sure, a bubble that's going to break out really soon. But I absolutely support this project. I mean, this work has been incredible to witness and see the passion in which students, teachers come back. Well, I'll say students. Well, you go as a student, right? So, the way that you come back and really energize and that you put it into practice. So, this has been an amazing, to sit here and witness, you know, through what you've always come back and share, and also what, you know, in terms of a recap. I think that's probably the first time I've seen what has happened as a result. So, I think it's really amazing. And one, one, earlier today, was thinking about some of the early thoughts as related to the ECCL project in its earlier stages, was the fact that it would be fabulous for Emeryville schools or our district to be a hub for professional development for teachers, for staff in general, and being a place where that energy lies. And we get the benefit of, you know, having stellar curriculum being created and not so much piloted, but start here, and also have the resources and the partnerships and relationships. So, this is just, that just keeps us right there. And I think it's definitely something we need to find a way to do. So, amazing work, and really excited about what you've been able to present to us this evening.
Thank you.
Really great. Board member comments? I know you have one. Let me just check before, before you go. Any board member comments?
Yeah. Yeah. It's always a pleasure to see your presentations, Ms. Stillman and Mr. Green, you know, getting the, I appreciate yours as well. Yeah, terrific work. I really, I guess, want to reiterate or clarify that, are we the only Bay Area district that is part of the Bay, of the Yale Initiative?
No, we have colleagues in San Jose, which is another city. We're not merged with them, but we did merge with the school districts in San Mateo County. So, we're, and they're small districts like we are. So, it's sort of, it could make a lot of sense to work with lots of other small districts on some type of a project.
So, when you say 11 districts throughout the country?
Yes.
Do we count as one together with those other ones?
We are one. We are one of 11.
We, Emory, are one.
We, the Bay Area, we are the...
The Bay Area is one.
Bay Area, Emeryville and San Mateo County schools are one.
Got it. Yeah, so, we're lucky to be part of that. So, then, the concrete question is what specifically are you asking the board to support in order for us to be able to continue our participation in this program and, you know, and take even more advantage of it?
So, the other districts, the five districts who have developed a local initiative, they have committed time and probably some of their professional development resources to developing a local teachers institute that partners with a university. So, we would have to be committed to doing, building some type of local initiative before we even would approach a university about working with us. We are looking for a commitment from our district, that this is something that they value as a method of professional development, because it really does target teachers in any stage of their career. Often, if you've been teaching a long time, you have a lot of great teaching strategies, although there are lots, there are always things to learn, and that's one of the great things about this collegial group, is that we're learning with really amazing teachers who are talking about what they're doing, and you just get all these great ideas. But it's all about teacher content. It's not teaching strategies or skills, it's developing content. For a biology teacher to go into a program like this, where you're working with a researcher who is working with cancer research and genetic, gene therapy, and being able to bring that current technology into your classroom, it's been a long time since many of our teachers have been in those classes. So, we need a, we need a refresher on what's up and coming and current. And for teachers who teach across the disciplines, it's an opportunity to find ways to merge new content for our students. There was a teacher last year who came back and taught her kids how to make biodiesel from chicken fat. I mean, like, that is amazing to know that you can fuel something from fat, but that comes from that type of, you know, learning, learning what's going on right now, research-wise.
So, that's helpful. It's, it's developing refresher on your content so that you can sort of bring the latest content into, into the class, into whether it be, is it for elementary teachers too?
Yes, we've had several teachers from Annie Yates participate. I think eight or so.
And so, how do they incorporate new content?
So, we've had teachers teach about insects and reproduction in insects. We've had teachers teach about biography. Camille Perez worked with a Pulitzer Prize-winning biographer, and then brought a biography study to her students that was based upon some of the same research strategies that he used. The wonderful thing about this program is you are in a seminar with people who teach K through 12. And the idea is everyone is learning the same content and finding ways to bring it to their students at that level. And it actually, I think, as far as math and science, it raises the rigor. This year's math seminar was taught by Roger Howe, who developed the Common, worked on developing the Common Core standards and has an incredible passion for math standards. And I just, you know, if I taught math, that would be the, you know, the guru to go to for the for the summer.
So, which leads to my next question. It sounds like it, this is content that would align well with Common Core, higher-order, critical kind of thinking, experiential communication among teams of students, types of experiences. But can you confirm that or explain how that aligns with?
So the curriculum units and ours are-
The other professional development priorities the district has.
Our curriculum units are lengthy. They couldn't go in the board packet. They're about 25 pages long because there's a lot of research that goes into it. But they are available online and they are long units. I mean, this was a four-month unit that involved a lot of interdisciplinary learning. And when you're looking at writing a curriculum unit away from school for a little while with the guidance of an expert, you're able to think more flexibly about all the different ways that you can integrate different learning experiences for your students. And that's why I think it would be, is so aligned for the Common Core. Because what we're learning is we're all teaching reading, we're all teaching writing, we're all teaching problem-solving skills, we're all teaching communication skills. And as teachers, we have to find those ways to do that within our discipline. I don't think that we are, we can't be departments in silos anymore. And this is a program that really highlights that and supports that.
So last question. What would this local teacher initiative institute look like? And does that still, are you still going to Yale in the summer? Are you just working with Berkeley and not going to Yale? Or how does that all?
So ideally, it would be, I think we are a small district to do this alone. So I'm really glad that we have partners on the other side of the Bay who are interested. In my eyes, it would be, we have our weekly professional development sessions and it would be offered, you have to apply to enter the program in general and that's, that's one of the guidelines. But it could be that there is a group of teachers, maybe 10 or so, who go to the Berkeley campus and meet with other teachers from other districts. And that's what they do on their Wednesdays and Thursdays. That's their professional development for, you know, the spring semester or the fall semester. So that they're receiving a different tiered professional development. All too often, we, we do a lot of tiered instruction for our students, meeting them at their different needs, but we don't do enough of that for our teachers. It's sort of a one-size-fits-all, add-water thing. And this is an applicant, you know, this is an opportunity. In other local districts, the way they do it is you have to participate each year in a local initiative to be eligible to go to the national initiative. So there's a certain level of commitment. There's also, I mean, it's a teacher-led initiative, so there's a lot of side work that Miles and I do to make it happen, to communicate with other people, to recruit.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just have a quick comment, other than those were great presentations. Richard Ambro is a neighbor of mine and he is an encyclopedia. If you have not had a conversation with that man, you should. He's amazing. I'll bring home a plant and be like, "Oh, look, I bought this plant." And he'll tell me where it's from and where it grows and how much water it likes and just, he's amazing. And I'm sure he brought lots of stuff because his place is filled, filled.
Yes. Yes, and I think one of the things that I didn't mention is this brought my students to meet a lot of the people in Emeryville. And for a lot of people who don't interact with our schools, got to see who our high school students are and realized that there's more to them than maybe what they've heard about our students. And when, I have students who run into Dr. Ambro and they are so excited to see him and he's just, he's so excited to chat with them. It's a good, it's a good, it's good for everyone, I think.
And he did tell, you know, quite a few of us on the block about his experience and he was very happy to be there and to be involved, so.
It's good to hear, thank you.
Can you, can we somehow, superintendent, put this presentation, both of these presentations on our, it seems like they should be part of our website or, I mean, these are, these are great expositions of student work and, I don't know, we should have videotaped the Bay Street event.
I believe our Emeryville document, videographer, documentarian had, came back with his camera.
Okay. Ms. Wachowski?
Yeah.
Really?
Yes, so he was there and then he came back.
Well, let's put that online too.
So I don't know what he has of that. And I, I documented it all on Instagram. And so it is, is well documented and put out there, but we'd be happy to do something else.
Okay, great. Maybe you could give Lisa, Tamarie and myself some, some ideas for some links or how we can go ahead and connect this at the website, if you don't mind. I have just a quick question, if I may, board. One is, I know the content is very critical and I can appreciate all the work. It's very exciting to me. I just have, I do have a strategy question. I'm kind of wondering, based on the strategies like the sensory piece you did, or particularly the Socratic method, if I can ask Mr. Green, did you find yourself using that more back in your classroom here after going through that at Yale? I was just curious.
I haven't implemented the curriculum yet. I plan on doing it in February, just because it's the industrial, I'm sorry, maybe December, just with it being the industrial revolution. But I will say this, after researching not only the content, but all the strategies, I feel immensely more capable as a teacher in the classroom. And I feel that I can apply almost any strategy that I learned over at Yale to any part of my curriculum. So yes, to answer your question, I think so.
Okay, great, thank you. I was just, I was just very curious.
And also, on a completely separate note, I wanted to thank you for facilitating the PD on Common Core over the summer. That was really helpful for me and some other teachers as well. So thank you for doing that. That was the best that we've had, so kudos to you.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you both.
No, I would just like to say, first of all, this is a very incredible program. I've seen teachers come back year after year, sharing their experience. And I can just see the excitement when they come back. I think the experience, the networking that you are able to have when you go to this initiative is, is just really impeccable and it's one of the best things, I believe, that any individual can do as far as professional development, is to get around others in their, in their craft and discuss and talk how to do things better, especially when you come back to the classroom. So, you know, I've, I've seen the work with, you know, with teachers when they come back. I've seen them at the elementary school. I know Tracy Lewis went one year. She came back fired up. I've sat in her class and I, you know, and I've seen the work at hand. I've sat in Mr. Green's English class and I've seen how he engaged students and really using their creative thoughts and thinking to, you know, to everyday topics and discussions in class. And Ms. Stillman, you know, yours is all in the league by yourself. So, you know, I, you know, yeah, and that's all to be said with that. So I can, you know, as a board member, you know, definitely support, you know, this local initiative that you all, you know, are, want to endeavor, endeavor in on. I can support it. And as President Dice said, you are really now building the programs, you know, that will go into the ECCL facility. And that's what, as a board, we've always wanted. We've always wanted to put programs into the facility and not have, and not just have a facility. So when it comes, when it comes to this, a local initiative like President Dice was saying, that was one of the elements of ECCL, was to develop a North Bay, you know, learning center for teachers in the north, in the north county, along with the county. So Ms. Stillman, again, you're, you know, you're right on it and you're, you know, you're driving the vision of ECCL. So for me, I'm only one board member, but whatever you need to make this happen, you know, work on it, bring it back to the board and let's make it happen. You guys did an excellent job.
Thank you so much.
Before you go, it's never over. It's never over.
Hold on.
I know. Member Pat.
You know, as you want to eagerly go, I'm just saying, amazing job. Thank you.
Ms. Stillman, we know you're going to have some other priorities in January. And if you need any board action on names for young girls, babies, you just let us know. And-
The committee is already rather large, but be still free.
Yeah. But, and we do look forward to seeing you again when the timing works out for you. But, and we hope you'll come by and introduce your new member of your family at some time when it works for you.
Thank you.
Great.
So last point, sorry, sorry. You know, I just could not leave, I always channel former member Simon. And would note that just through the imagery of what you provided as a result of the work you did, the fact that the partnerships and the relationships made it such a critical opportunity for students to engage in that project is just a phenomenal example of what all of this work for however many years I've been sitting up here and before I got here. So I just wanted to applaud and appreciate that work and, and just say that you're such a shining example of what the intent is behind everything. There's no notorious or some sinister thought back, you know, not in my head anyway, I can't even think the word. But, but it was absolutely beautiful to see it represented in such a way. So I just wanted to appreciate that work. And we do, we can't wait for the shower. Let me know, I'll send the gift. But, but we definitely appreciate and congratulate you, so.
And I have one other thing. You guys, you don't have to stay up there. But the other thing about this program as well, it really, it really gives teachers the professional development that they need. And what I've been able to see is when teachers come back, when we talk about high-quality teachers for our students, I think this is what this program produces for Emeryville. You know, they come back better than they were when they left.
Feeling better.
Feeling better, actually doing better. And the fact that they're engaging our students, putting practicality, you know, what they're learning in the classroom and bringing it to, you know, the real-world life experience and the practicality of what they're learning out, inside the classroom, outside the classroom is really what makes a well-rounded student. So, I mean, for this program to be able to, you know, continually produce a high quality in our teachers and give this, give the energy to our students, I mean, this, this program is just amazing. So great job.
So you know where he feels, how he feels. But before you go, any members of the public wish to address this particular topic? See, I just, please, if you come to the mic. Sorry, I know, right? I know. So the folks at home can hear you.
You know, our candidate forum for the league is next Thursday night. And I was just thinking, just like to, I was going to send an email to Lisa and just ask for the slides to put up before that event, you know, as people are walking in, just, you know, how at the movies, you have like, you know, this is a good advertisement.
We have a wonderful friend in Ms. Singleton.
So Ms. Stillman, if you get the information on Lisa, we can give them the slides. Great, thank you.
I think you're, you're good to go now. Thank you both so much. Thank you both.
Great job, great job.
All right, that was high-energy. And now we move into?
The gran limit.
The gran limit, exactly. No, no slides, no slide at all. We're now on to-